Okay, we're on.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. This is the August 31st meeting of the Millis Select Board. I'll introduce the members and our team. My name is Jim McCaffrey. I'm the Chair of the Board. Joining me is Vice Chair Pete Germain, our Clerk Erin Underhill. We also have Mike Gazinski, who is a Town Administrator, as well as Karen Beray, hostess the mostest here, as well as the operating director for the town. So, welcome to the meeting. First order of business is we do have a couple of announcements, one that I will make and one I will ask Karen to take the lead on. I just want to remind folks that tomorrow, September 1st, is primary election day. The polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the Veterans Memorial Building, same place as often you've gone before. The polls again will be open, but we're asking people to observe the rules when you come into the to vote. Don't go to the polls if you're sick, or if you have been exposed to COVID-19 leading up to election day and are still in quarantine. We hope that you will also abide by the rule to wear face masks. Don't touch your face while you're at the polling station. Maintain social distancing. And this is a technical item because we want to make sure the vote counts are correct. Keep your if you're using hand sanitizer, we ask you to try and take extra care to keep the ballot dry so that it won't get kicked out of the voting machine because it's damp. So, we're committed to making every effort that we can as a town to make sure that every voter is safe, and we certainly aren't doing anything other than encouraging those who are ready, willing, and able to come to the polls and vote. Over 1,500 of your fellow citizens have already voted by mail or by early voting, so we have quite a head start on the count. But election day is tomorrow, and those of you who have not had the opportunity to vote early, you will have the opportunity tomorrow at the Town Hall, again, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So, the next item for announcement is Karen, you take the lead on this one?
It is. So, at the last Select Board meeting, the Board approved the designation of a parking spot for military veterans. And the sign came in. I thought you might want to see it. It's backwards, I guess, for you guys. But it's a beautiful sign, and it says, "Thank You For Your Service" at the bottom, and I think it is really nice. And Jim McKay or in the DPW are going to be putting this up. They actually have one out, but it's not in the right spot. We're actually going to move it over. But this will be in the front of Town Hall for any of the military veterans. And there you go.
Thank you very much. That's great. Great to see. Okay. Any other announcements that my colleagues would like to make?
No, not at this time.
So then we'll move on to our agenda. The first item we have on our agenda this evening is some really exciting news that the our Fire Chief is going to share with us about a FEMA grant for staffing in the Fire Department. So, Chief Barrett, if you could take the lead and describe what good news you've heard and what you'd like the Board to do tonight.
Excellent. Thank you so much for having me this evening. Yeah, last Friday, I received a call from Senator Elizabeth Warren to congratulate the Town of Millis on receiving a 2019 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant. This is the state of grant that we've been talking about for a couple of years. And this year, we were awarded a grant in the amount of $978,324. That funds four firefighters for three years. With an additional bonus, initially, there was supposed to be a town share that we would have to chip in over the three years, and they have waived that for the entire grant. So, the only cost that the town will have to incur is the grant covers all the salaries and benefits for the four firefighters. It'll just be over time, clean some equipment, and we're hoping to get approval to have some of those funds transferred from the ambulance revenue fund. So, it should be no impact on the taxpayer for the next three years. After the three years, we will have to absorb the cost of the firefighters. And, you know, I do believe, and I think Mr. Gazinski would agree with me, that we see the funds coming in through ambulance revenue and town growth, and we should be able to support that in those that fourth year.
Yes, I do agree with that. We have a lot of growth in that area, and I think that'll continue to be that way. And I think that the needs and the demands placed upon the fire service and rescue will be only increasing, and especially in light of the new housing being developed in town. And I think this this grant, which I want to congratulate the Chief on for all his hard work, will certainly help us get to where we need to be. And we'll just need to plan over the next three years on on our methods for funding that. I think that's well within reach of the town over the next three years.
We were very honored to receive the grant. In the first round, we're one of seven Massachusetts departments to receive it. In Massachusetts, they had over 100 applications. So, you know, it speaks a lot to our need and that the federal government, you know, acknowledged that and was able to pick this grant. So, we're really excited for that.
Thank you, Chief. I just want to congratulate you also on the award of the grant. I think, yeah, we have a need, but also we have an effective advocate for us and the Chief. And again, we're trying to do what we have been trying to do is find ways to have the staffing level of the Fire Department and Fire and Rescue meet the growing needs of the town. The Chief has been working on this for literally years in order to find a way to offset some of the cost to the taxpayer of the Town of Millis. And as was stated, this is this grant covers the full cost of the additional staff, both pay and benefits. The Board went into this supporting the application when there was potential cost sharing in years two and three. That cost sharing is gone. So, we have the opportunity here to take advantage of this grant to meet some of our staffing needs. And again, you know, it is going to be a long-term issue for us in terms of maintaining that staff. But this grant of almost $980,000 goes a long way helping us get to that get to that goal. And we're very grateful to our legislators, to Senator Warren and others who have advocated for us. But I do want to just congratulate the Chief again on on this award on behalf of the town. So, I'd like to ask questions their questions from my colleagues.
If I may.
Mr. Germain.
I want to congratulate the Chief especially on gaining this grant. It's not just writing for the grant. It's the way in which he maintains the station, trains his cadre, and has overall control and management of the entire firefighting and response process in this town. And to be frank, I personally commend you on the amount of effort you've put in to get this Fire Department to the level it is. You would never have received this grant if you hadn't achieved that level. And I mean it sincerely, at least from my perspective, that I think it's a superb effort on your part, and it's likewise due recognition of the effort that you have put in. So, thank you from our perspective of the town, and thank you personally for what you've done.
Thank you very much. Ms. Underhill?
I too would just like to say thank you, and I appreciate all your hard work. Everything that you and your team do in town is it's just remarkable. And I've unfortunately had, you know, some experiences where I've had to use you guys, and you guys have been amazing. So, I mean, I can't I can't thank you enough. And this grant is amazing. So, congratulations, and thank you for all your hard work in getting this for our town.
Thank you very much. And I just want to also mention that, you know, without the support of, you know, the Select Board, Finance Committee, present and past, we wouldn't be able to accomplish a lot of these things. And one of the things I'm really proud of is of the four positions we're awarded, I'm able to hire three right from our call staff. Three, you know, firefighter paramedics that we know, that we work with, that we train, that we don't have to worry about history. We know them. They know our system. It's tiny. And that that's because of the support we've got from the, you know, the town. And it means a lot to us. You know, the one other position where we'll have to look outside is going to be interesting because right now, a lot of communities are hiring. There's a lot of turnover, and paramedics are, you know, at an all-time high. Everybody is looking to hire them. So, we're hoping that our reputation, the support we get from the community and the Town Boards, you know, we're a very appealing department for a young paramedic that wants to come somewhere, grow with the department, be part of a community and a family. So, we're hoping we're going to get some good candidates for that final position. Again, thank you.
So, the next step for this Board would be to take a vote to formally accept the grant received under the, I guess it's the FEMA award under the Safe Grant, the Safe Program. So, I would ask a Board member to make a motion that the town accept the grant, or we'd ask the Chief to accept the grant on behalf of the town.
Okay. I move that Chief Barrett accepts the grant, the Safer Grant, for FEMA-related services in the amount of $978,324.
I'll second that. It has been moved and seconded that the Town of Millis support Chief Barrett's request and ask him to accept this award on behalf of the Town of the Town of Millis. So, I will poll the Board for that vote. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And the motion is carried unanimously. Again, thank you, Chief, and we look forward to well, we won't be seeing too many new faces on the streets, but at least some of the same old faces will be working harder and more hours. So, very good. Thank you.
Again, thank you so much for the support. We really appreciate it. We look forward to moving the department even further. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the appointment of three on-call library assistants. I'll ask Mr. Gazinski to introduce this, and then we will we'll ask Rachel Silverman to also discuss with us these three up these three candidates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's tracked in your packet. You'll see information related to the three individuals that are seeking to fill the vacancies for the position of on-call library assistant. I know that the Acting Director, Rachel Silverman, is working hard on this. We're the trustees, and we have three great applicants that I'd like to appoint and be asking for the Board ratification. Those individuals are are again, listed in your packet. And to make sure we have the pronunciations correct, I'm going to ask Rachel to jump in at this point.
No problem.
Talk about the vacancies and the the three folks that that we'd like to join the team at the Millis Library.
Great. I just got a message. My internet is unstable, so wave me down if I've frozen and I'll stop for a moment. It keeps kind of blipping in and out. So, we've had a lot of turnover in our on-call position. A few people, a couple people had lack of availability and weren't taking weren't taking subbing positions, so we weren't really able to use them. And some are older and in high-risk categories and didn't feel comfortable working on-call during the pandemic. So, we had some vacancies to fill. And what we do use our on-call staff is for planned absences like vacations and for unplanned absences like illness and emergencies. And they basically learn the front desk, and they they learn sort of a mini version of running the front desk and all the tasks. But you need to sort of essentially run the key functions of the library. So, we want to bring on these three candidates. They're all really wonderful. We had, as Karen can attest to, a slew of applicants because the job market is bright with people looking for work, although maybe not paramedics. But, um, yeah, so we had we were able to pick people that all had library experience or were in library school, which always is beneficial to have people who are very dedicated to libraries. And so, the three candidates are Amy Grochens. She lives in Millis. She's a library student at Simmons, and she was is looking for a career change to librarianship. She's been managing the front desk at a law office for 15 years. Her boss raves about her. He is sad that she's moving on. She's going to keep working that job, but he will accommodate her working with us because she wants to gain that experience. And she's in school. Aliyah Harris has worked on and off the libraries since she was in high school. She's worked in both public and school libraries. She's a very she loves drama, so she has a very, like, friendly and charismatic personality. And she's
Well, we have plenty of drama in Millis, so that'll be good.
I think she'll be fun at the front desk is more my point, like a friendly face, a fun face. And she works on-call now at Goodnow Library in Sudbury, which is also a Minuteman Library. So, she knows how to use our software and the different things we use as a Minuteman Library. And then our last candidate is Nicole Grandstaff. She lives in Franklin. She's also in library school. She's doing an online program with the University of Central Missouri. And she's a former English teacher, and she's worked in customer service and in a hospital setting. So, she really doesn't have library experience, but she's a library student, and she's passionate about it. And she has also worked in situations where she's had to be on her feet, on her toes, and get a lot done. So, I'm really confident, very confident, because we wanted to hire even more people than we could. These were like our top three of 18 people. We didn't talk to maybe it wasn't 18, but it was a lot of people. And they were all fantastic. So, yeah. Those are our candidates.
Very good. So, it's the opportunity for the Board members to ask any questions. If there be no questions, then I would ask the Town Administrator, who's trying to get off the hook here, not naming these to recommend their appointment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I I'm requesting the Board vote to ratify my appointment of Amy Grochens, Aliyah Harris, and Nicole Grandstaff as on-call library assistants. I'll move that we vote to approve the appointment by the Town Administrator of the three on-call library assistants, Amy Grochens, Aliyah Harris, and Nicole Grandstaff.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that the Board approved the Town Administrator's appointment as on-call library assistants to Amy Grochens, Aliyah Harris, and Nicole Grandstaff. I'll poll the Board for a vote. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. And thank you, Rachel, for the work. It's great. Glad to see you. We've got some new folks coming in. And it's exciting that you had such a great group to choose from.
It really was. It was wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Rachel.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of a member of the Conservation Commission. As many of you know, two months ago or a bit ago, the member, the longtime member of the Commission, Ann Rich, passed away. So, there had there is an opportunity. There was an opportunity for a new member to come on board. Mr. John Stedman is the candidate who has spoken with the Conservation Commission, and we have received a memo from the CONCOM recommending that the Board approve the appointment of Mr. John to serve as a member of the Conservation Commission. Questions from the Board or a motion?
I'll move
Go ahead. Please.
I move that we approve the appointment of Mr. John Stedman to the Conservation Commission.
I'll second that.
So, it's been moved and seconded that the Board approved the appointment of Mr. John Stedman to serve as a member of the Conservation Commission. That's a full-voting member. So, I will poll the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Since this memo was sent to us from the Conservation Commission, another member has resigned from the Commission. So, there is another opening available. And if anyone is interested in being considered for membership in the Conservation Commission, please contact the Commission, or you can contact our office, the Town Administrator's Office, Karen Beray, and we will be happy to pass that along to the members of the Conservation Commission, a really important group that does a lot of hard work for us because the town is very involved because we have so much development going on. So, hopefully, we would find another person capable of moving into the into the role. So, we wanted to make sure that everyone understood that there is another vacancy on the Conservation Commission. We also have now two appointments to be made. One is as a result of a member of the Planning Board asking to rotate off of the Conserva on the Community Preservation Committee. So, the Planning Board met and has asked us to appoint as a member of the Community Preservation Committee, Nicole Riley, who is that will be the Planning Board's representative on the CTC. So, I could take a motion or if there's any discussion, I would take a motion to appoint Ms. Riley to the Community Preservation Committee.
I'll move that we recommend the appointment of Ms. Nicole Riley to the CTC, Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board appoint the Planning Board Representative to the Community Preservation Committee, Nicole Riley. I'll poll the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. The next item is an appointment on behalf of the Community Preservi I'm sorry, on behalf of the Conservation Commission. Their member, who was Ann Rich, has passed away, as I indicated earlier. And the Conservation Commission has asked us to appoint Carol Hayes to serve as the Conservation Commission Representative on the Community Preservation Committee. So, if there are any questions, or if I would take a motion?
I move that we approve the appointment of Ms. Carol Hayes as the Conservation Commission designate to the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Carol Hayes as the Conservation Commission's representative on the Community Preservation Committee. I'll poll the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Okay. The next item on our agenda relates to stormwater issues, including MS4 services proposal, as well as the next item after that, which is consideration of a stormwater financial planning study. The Board has received some information regarding background on this. I would recommend that we'll take a look at the material, actually starting with the letter from Betsy Frederick to Mr. McKay dated August 27, 2020, which is really sequentially, not necessarily in the calendar, but for consideration, is really the the main document. Then there's another memo from Mr. Goldberg dated August 25, 2020, which relates to this this proposal that we have. It's one of the elements of the proposal, and it's got a little bit more background on it. These are separate from the Stormwater Utility Financial Planning Proposal. But for purposes of discussion, we have asked Betsy Frederick, world-famous author of the letter, to join the Board. And I'd asked Mr. McKay if he'd like to say some something about this, and then maybe ask Betsy Frederick to to explain this a little bit further.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this proposal for FI21 MS4 services on the letter dated August 27 is from Ms. Frederick to myself. And these are standard operating things that need to be done for our annual report. These were all voted on at our first meeting when we first laid out our project goals for the annual report. If we go to page six, six of six, I think that gives the the breakdown. Andrew's worked very hard with Betsy to give a breakdown of, you know, task one through task 1A, and they give, you know, what what the cost is for, and actually, what is the, you know, the deliverables at the end of it. The second page, before I turn it over to Betsy, the second, there's much discussion on, we haven't gone out since the original scope of work for billing. And we've had many discussions with Toll Brothers, the Hickory Hills subdivision, the Acorn Place over 55 development. Most of those new buildings have not been added to the building structure. Toll Brothers has asked that we, you know, start this billing towards the residents that live there, that they, you know, not that they don't want to pay the bill any longer, but they feel that there's enough residents populated that they can. And actually, I think that it would be to our best interest for that to come out. And that's in that second memo that Andrew had written out, it's it's a much more in-depth scope of work. You know, we were hoping that we'd be able to, you know, cut the out of the seven tasks, you know, the utility billing and the on-call service support, that we would have been in a better place. But we haven't because of not being able to hire new staff to take care of that those two tasks. So, I don't know, Betsy, if you want to say anything, or if there's any questions you want to ask Betsy or myself or Andrew on this part.
We're available, Andrew and I, for any specific questions. You know, as Jim mentioned, those documents speak to the same overall scope of work. So, it's not it's not that there is an entire scope of work for that under that first document, and then that second one is additional work. It was just further clarification as to the tasks that would be covered through those last elements of the work. So, we're happy to answer any questions around what's represented there. And please let us know if there's something further you want us to clarify.
Okay. I guess that what I'd just like to say is that, as was indicated by Mr. McKay, we're operating under a multi-year plan, really, of trying to get our arms around the stormwater issue, not simply the billing and the but also things like planning, infrastructure analysis. We can see that, you know, there is information here about tackling the the real issue, which is the phosphorus going into the river, which is the long-term goal of this whole program is to find ways to reduce that, not simply to to create the stormwater model, which which doesn't address some real issue. It's not simply compliance, but frankly, it is largely compliance at the outset here. We have a permit that we're operating under as a municipality. Stormwater Utility is responsible for the tasks and whatnot. And as Mr. McKay indicated, you know, based upon the size of our town and the size of our infrastructure, I mean, it hasn't been up till now feasible from a financial point of view to add staff to do these tasks, to create these reports. So, we've relied on our partners at Kleinfelter to help us meet those needs. And that's really what this is in terms of the next year of the work. And as Mr. McKay indicated, one of the things that is important here, as I understand it, is to keep working on who's building what where and who owns it so that we can allocate the right costs to the right people relative to the surface on properties owned by Millis residents. So, residents. So I don't have any further questions on this particular component. It is a little bit clearer from Andrew's memo about the expanded scope here of trying to get this, I guess, the GAS update and site visits that are actually going to occur and pictures are going to be taken. Have you guys started to do that already? Actually?
We are, we're doing some of the training, but Andrew, I'm not sure we've actually gone out to take a look at doing any of the site visits. Is that correct? Is that, is there a schedule for that for the next coming weeks?
Yeah, Andrew, but we have not done that yet. And it's scheduled, we're, right now, we're doing outfall testing through training and we're going to use the staff that's here while they're in Milis. So some of this work is already, you know, been taken care of. We're training our own staff to do the outfall. That's a big step for us. I'm very happy with that. We're using our iPads. We're downloading, getting on our new WorkAuto system. And, you know, this is the third day of it. So hopefully, that deliverable will be completed this year. We will be able to eliminate the, you know, the services needed from Kleinfelter. But to answer your question, Jim, now, we haven't started that yet, but while the staff is here, they will go out and visit these sites, so it's not an extra cost.
Somebody was walking down my house taking pictures today.
Hey, brother, was in.
This is the second visit because we had Beta out here last week. I guess it's anecdotal since I live over here, but I just wanted to indicate that what we are looking for folks to do, we're actually doing, I think Beta was over here making sure that the developer, that this neck of the woods is complying with the Conservation Commission requirements. So, you know, not only are we setting rules and regulations, but we're working on enforcement to make sure that everybody is living up to their particular responsibilities. In terms of, well, let me, before I go forward, I'd like to ask the other members of the board if they have questions on the proposal for fiscal '21 MS4 services.
If I may?
Yes, Mr. Jermaine?
I want to make a couple of observations, if you will. First of all, I know that I get calls from people occasionally on the costs of MS4. It's going to happen, it's going to continue to happen. There doesn't seem to be any way around it, whether we hire people internally. And I have to be honest, I'm not sure we could hire people who would have the same kinds of credentials as the people from Kleinfelter, who are very familiar with this from a variety of perspectives. But it is a shame to see, in this case, $55,000 or whatever, having to be spent on just maintaining the documentation, putting together the procedures and doing some of the other things. It has to be done, I'm not suggesting otherwise. I think it's incumbent upon us, the board, if you will, to perhaps help the community to better understand the costs that are associated with meeting these requirements. We really don't have any option in so doing. And to that end, it bothers me a great deal that, yes, okay, we have some cleanup, but trying to understand the scope of the cleanup, the source of this cleanup, the issues involved are very complex, to be honest with you. I mean, we hear things like, you've got to clean up all the leaves so they don't go into the river. I mean, if that's the primary source of phosphorus, it's one that everybody looks around and says, wait a moment, we purposely moved out here in the country to be where there are trees, leaves and everything, and now you're telling us we have to clean all of that up so it doesn't go into the river? And that's just one point. My overall point being, we as a community have to recognize that there are new costs, this being one of them, that we have to face up to. There are some others perhaps coming down the road that Mr. McKay has gone over with us. And I am concerned as to whether the trade-off in the future makes sense, either bringing in our own personnel or continuing to use outside assistance where they have the technical expertise on a continuing basis with education and otherwise that we might not have. At any rate, those are just observations, those are my comments. I realize we have to move forward on this. It doesn't make me any happier, but I think we have to recognize as a town, it is necessary to do so. And thank you, Betsy and Andrew, for the information you provided. It was very well put together, easy to read.
Thank you. Just if I may add, Mr. Jermaine, to your thoughts there. I think one of the things that we have worked really diligently with Mr. McKay around is working through capacity building around those tasks that naturally can and should fall within the DPW's operational capabilities. And, you know, as Jim just mentioned, you know, they are really, they've just been tremendous, the staff, in terms of understanding what we're trying to do in terms of the IT infrastructure and the tools that are being provided for them to do the work. And they are fully engaged with the capacity building and, you know, sort of institutionalizing what the department needs to be doing going forward and leaving those things out at the higher level, strategic planning level with Jim, you know, working with us. I think we are working in that direction. I think you will see a continual decline with respect to the contract values of any outsourcing to ourselves or anyone else. So we understand where you're coming from and can completely relate to the desire to see this as something that's a good balance between, you know, efficiently enacted work through the DPW and what you need from your consultants.
Thank you. No other questions from board? I would ask that, what did specifically you want us to do tonight, Mr. McKay or Mr. Gazinski, with respect to the MS4 proposal here?
Mr. Chairman, I was talking to Betsy about this. I would, I would think that most of these are lower. We would ask for each task to be signed off as we start working on them. Because if you look at, you know, some of these have high amounts, 12, you know, $10,000, $15,000. It would be as need basis and not to exceed that amount. And as the contract gets to over what both myself and the Town Administrator can't, you know, sign, we would come back to the board. When it approaches at $15,000 or the $12,000, which, it's an amount that's there, I don't think we hit either one of the, we did not hit either one of them last year because the scope of work was, you know, moved out over, you know, a two-year plan. So I would just, this is just an update that I usually give, usually in July or August for the past two years and just, you know, time ran away with us this year.
We just made it, it's still August.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so as far as we're concerned, this is an update. We see no reason to put in the progress of the process and Kleinfelter is fine with this in terms of us executing our documents and whatnot. I think the sense of the board is that this is on target and we'll just continue on with the work and we'll look forward to hearing back from you folks as time goes on. The only thing I would ask is, really, it speaks to about education of the public. There's an item here which is Task 1D, which is Public Education and Outreach. And we're distributing education materials to comply. And you, Kleinfelter is talking about reviewing the education and messaging plan described in the notice of intent and provide recommended education materials for the town to distribute to meet the permit requirements. Hopefully, they will also not only meet the permit requirements, but actually provide some public education.
Right.
I think that might be an opportunity down the road for us to just take a look at some of those materials and look at the recommended changes you might want to make so that the board can support the outreach and the education, as Mr. Jermaine indicated, and make sure that we're giving it our full support and it gets distributed in an appropriate way.
Absolutely. We're, we're with that. And part of the intent here is to leverage, as you know, you're the ones at the heart of all this, there's a lot of activity going on in the community right now with respect to stormwater management or water quality related issues. So we are trying to leverage that effort and ensure that the messaging makes sense to people and that there's a logical progression of the message and the value. And so we're more than happy to revisit that with you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is related, I guess, it's item 20-183. And this is about a proposal to provide the town with some financial planning services as they relate to the stormwater utility for fiscal year '21. And I guess, Jim, if you'd like to lead or Betsy, wanted to talk to us a little bit about this proposal, which is really related to the billing process and something we want to make sure that we continue to get our arms around. But it looks as though you're recommending us to engage another firm to do some of that work. We already have support in Modern Sewer with rate setting and whatnot from Ty &amp; Bond, which we met with either our last meeting or the meeting before. But I'd like to hear a little bit more about what the proposal is here for this organization and how they're going to help us with the rate setting and billing for the stormwater.
So I can just quickly address the memo and Betsy. Unfortunately, I think we lost Andrew. I mean, Andrew's the one who types all this stuff up. Andrew's our go-to person. Unfortunately, I think we lost him.
Hey, seems to have a lot of your problems.
Yeah. So this, this is part of the Asset Management Grant that's already been approved and this amount that we're asking for in the breakdown, the board's already approved those breakdowns and costs. And this is for, we're looking for, if you remember, in the first year, we had, I think it was like 25 abatement claims that came in front of myself, the Finance Director and Treasure Collector. And we worked through, I'd say a good amount of them, you know, satisfactorily, we worked through a good amount of them. The second year, we had 13 credit applications that were filed with the town. All 13 of them were denied and it was due to the credit manual that was written and approved by the board. And actually, I don't know if it was town meeting that approved the credit manual, but the board definitely adopted the credit manual for three-year span. So, and then last year, and these are all due by June 1st, we had two companies and one resident requesting a credit, not abatement, a credit. We worked through one of them and we have a hearing scheduled for the next week or two for that, you know, to hear that hearing. We still haven't addressed the 13, out of the 13, eight people have a right to appeal to the Board of Selectmen. And I believe we're going to have that hearing very shortly, hopefully before the bills go out on October 1st. So what we did is, in many discussions between myself, Betsy and Andrew is to, you know, the credit manual, if you look at the, if any of you have read the credit manual, seen it, it's very stringent. It's very, and it's the way it should be. I mean, that's what, you know, you don't, you don't institute a policy and then expect everybody to, you know, go in and file for credit or abatements and then you're just raising the rates someplace else. It's all, the rates were structured on with, you know, so many credits and abatements that were given out. So we looked at, how could we make that credit manual better? But I can tell you, just quickly, Mr. Chair, if I could, three surrounding towns and they're using our credit manual, they're using the policy that the Board of Selectmen, they're using the bylaw that was adopted by Milis, and they're using word for word and they're implementing that within this year. One of them's a fairly large town and two other little smaller towns. So they are using our, how we laid stuff out for this stormwater management, enterprise funds, they're all using enterprise funds. But getting back to the memo that Andrew wrote, and he'll speak about it in a minute, is, you know, how could we best look at the credit manual? How are we going to address the people that are coming for these credits? You know, the appeal process? And if you read the memo that Andrew wrote and the company that we've chosen, you can see that that's part of, that's a big part of what they're looking for. The company, they do this for a living. That's all they do is they handle a stormwater management. And we will get a report almost identical to the one that you just received for Ty &amp; Bond for five-year build-out for the stormwater management. The reason, again, you did vote for it, and if we were to have Kleinfelter to do this, it would have been under the contract that we had signed, but we just, you know, we as a, you know, the three of us and the Town Administrator's been in, you know, some of these conversations. And I told you before, I don't do anything without him knowing what's going on. And he has to sign a contract with this separate entity because it's over the $10,000 mark. So it's for care of reasons why this is in front of you. And again, Andrew can, if he wants to get into an explanation on this.
And can I just jump in, Andrew, real quickly? I don't know, okay, go ahead. You look like you have audio now. I was a little concerned that you were going in and out, but take the time while you're still with us.
I apologize again for the issues and thank you, Jim, for the introduction. We've worked really well with this, this firm, Raftellus, in a couple of other communities. And as Jim mentioned, they're very strong in municipal finance and have worked on implementing stormwater utilities in multiple other communities. So I think that this is a great time for the town to be taking a look at upcoming program costs, as Mr. Jermaine mentioned. And this effort will be undertaken in conjunction with Kleinfelter as a part of the Asset Management Grant Program that you approved earlier in the month that we started and are doing those outfall inspections that Mr. McCaffrey, you mentioned, under as well. So some of these programmatic costs are being strategically incorporated into grant-funded efforts and we're really grateful to be partnering with you on those and think that Raftellus will be an excellent partner in making some recommendations on how rates can be adjusted to, so that the town can run a sustainable enterprise.
And just one other comment in that respect. I mean, I think, you know, we've heard and clearly want to respond or respect the board's questions in the past with respect to the nature of the rate setting initially and the process that went through. We thought it would be in your best interest to provide a third-party objective look at the rates in the process. I know you had gone through a, an exercise not too long ago, you know, looking at your DPW operations and costs, and there certainly was some corresponding support for the numbers that had originally been developed. But I think it's just in the town's best interest for this to be a separate activity apart from the work that, you know, we're obviously still working with the community in this regard. But I thought the objectivity allowed there to be another element of confidence in the numbers that are, you know, coming out of this without this sense that Kleinfelter has any vested interest in a certain outcome with respect to what those rates look like. So that was part of our thought process here. We're happy to answer any questions you have with respect to Raftellus and the relationship that we have with them.
I guess, you know, the question I have is, my question is, does Kleinfelter have any role in reviewing this information from Raftellus or is this going to be a direct contract between the town and this other firm?
It would be a direct, oh, go ahead, sorry.
So I do think of those as two distinct questions, Mr. McCaffrey, that Kleinfelter will be reviewing the deliverable and providing information that Raftellus would use to inform the rate model development. However, the second part of your question is, is it a separate contract between the town and Raftellus? And the answer to that is yes. That we could have worked directly with Raftellus under a sub-agreement, but we decided to separate that aspect of the project so that the town can make a decision. Just due to timing reasons, we wanted to get started with the field-based work under the Asset Management Grant Program when the weather permitted. the asset management grant program when the weather permitted it. So that's underway now. So this is really a review of a portion of that program that we'd be helping to support.
Okay. Good. I understand. So this is really a contract with them, and they'll collaborate with you in helping to develop the deliverables. Okay. Any questions from the board members?
Sure. I have a question to the process, which I don't kind of fully understand the point. I noticed that he's talking, you're talking about in here, Dave Fox is, a planning model in Excel. My concern is a models versus using SQL Server-type databases that, in the long term, provide a much better means for updating, management, and so forth. We'll see accordingly, and I do get concerned when I hear that the primary would be Excel. Now, maybe Excel is just a reporting tool utilizing a database, but I'd like clarification on that, if you would.
Certainly. That is, that use of technology is certainly something that I can speak with Dave Fox about. Really, I think you hit the nail on the head when you mentioned maintenance and training and upkeep. I think the selection of an Excel-based tool was deliberate such that Raftellus could provide training to any user without knowledge of complex databases. But I do think that there's some flexibility in how the data is stored and accessed and reported.
Other questions?
I don't seem to have any particular questions beyond that.
Is Underhill?
I don't have any questions, but that was an excellent point that Pete brought up.
It's great to me. Thank you for your work, Pete.
Well, you see, you can buffalo anyone sometimes.
Well, it's two to one in favor of it, okay. So, let me know for the questions. I guess what I would look for then is a motion from the board to approve the contract, to direct the town administrator to enter into a contract with Raftellus, since I'm in the process of making the, just even I'll make the motion, to enter into a contract with Raftellus to provide, now I'm looking for the piece of paper, consulting services relating to the billing process for the stormwater utility in the amount not to exceed $13,252. Can't find the page, I've got the right.
I have $13,240. Now, maybe I'm looking at the wrong.
I'm sure you're right. I couldn't find the paper.
You're correct. It's 13,240.
Oh, here it is. Correct. 13,240.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. To direct the town administrator to execute a contract between the town, Millis, and Raftellus Financial Consultants to provide stormwater financial planning study in an amount not to exceed $13,240. So I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Is Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you to our colleagues from Kleinfelter. This will be your rule today.
And congratulations on your FEMA grant. That's wonderful news.
It is very good news. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda, scheduled for 7:30. My clock says I have a couple of minutes. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to ask, with the board's permission, that I jump to item 20-186, which is the approval of a bond anticipation note. Carol's on the line, so just run us through that briefly. The board could act on it tonight.
So every year, the bond anticipation note that was approved by the annual town meeting on May 14, 2018, for capital items of $596,573, that note was a five-year note. Each year comes before the town for us to renew the one-year note. The original amount of that was on September 14, 2018, for the $596,573. The pay down during fiscal year '20 happened in September 12, 2019, of $120,834. So in 2020, we renewed the bond for $475,739. The expected pay down in FY 2021, which is going to happen on September 10, is $118,933. And that will leave us a bond renewal for September 14 of $356,806 in order for us to continue to fund the capital projects from that annual town meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this is a, just another step in a commitment that we made earlier, and it's the next year's installment.
Exactly.
I don't know if this is the lowest interest rates we've ever paid, 0.7%, but it's pretty low.
Exactly.
Any questions from the board? Are they taking a motion?
I'll move that we approve the bond anticipation note for this fiscal year in the amount of $356,806. I think that's the amount.
Is there a second?
Sorry, second.
Move in seconded for the board to approve the $356,806 bond anticipation note, so maturing on September 10, 2021, at interest rate of 0.7%. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Is Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. So I believe that anticipating our approval, we've already signed it, so now it's signed, sealed, and delivered. Hopefully, it's done in a timely way. Thank you, Carol, for running through that with us.
Thank you very much.
All right. I'll go back to the 7:30 item. 7:30, we have an appointment with Mr. American regarding 1344 Main Street, which is a proposal for a local initiative project, which we discussed several months ago, and we discussed it in the context of water and sewer extensions. We asked that the applicant and the developer to come back and update us on what the project plans were. And as I understand it, the developer is in the process of pretty close to actually applying to the state under the applicable statutes for this local initiative project. So it's timely for us to get a report back. So I had Mr. McKay and Mr. American noted here on my agenda. Mr. McKay, do you have some initial comments you'd like to make? Or did he have the good sense to sign off?
Not sure.
Okay, well, then, is Mr. American on, and Mr. Roach?
Dan American's here.
Okay, great.
Mr. McCaffrey, I was just going to say, I think we only listed Jim McKay to if we had questions about the water in the sewer, but as you said, that was already voted at a previous.
We already voted on that, right, yeah. So he didn't leave early. This is not unexcused absence from Mr. McCaffrey. Okay, Mr. American?
I'm here. What am I supposed to do?
You don't need to do anything, Jim.
I was in, I was talking to Paul, sorry.
Okay. We're talking about 1344, so we'll turn it over to Mr. American, who has provided us with some additional information. And then Mr. Roach is on as well, to talk about how the plans are developing for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dan American with Legacy Engineering. Okay, if I share my screen?
Please.
Karen, yes?
Yes, please. You on there? There you go.
You guys, you guys see that?
Yeah, we're getting better and better at this. Slowly.
Working on it. Okay, so a little bit of an update here. As the chair mentioned, we appeared before the board back in February. Board took some initial votes on permitting sewer and water access for this development from this Underhill's benefit. I'll just give a quick kind of overview of this. This is a property at 1344 Main Street, which is across the street from Tractor Supply. There's an existing single-family home there on commercial land. That whole area, for the most part, is commercial land. There are a few single-family homes in there. This is surrounded on most sides by commercial land. And Tom Roach has proposed to do an affordable housing development, a LIP development, for 20 units. These would be town installments. This is a rendering, project architect, just to give you a feel for it. So what, the next step in the process for a LIP is to move forward with an application to the state. And the involvement of the select board in that process is that we would prepare the LIP application form. Because it's a LIP, a local initiative petition, the board would actually co-sign that application, and the board would provide a letter of support that would be appended to the application, and that would all be submitted to the state by the applicant's 40B consultant. So we're here, we've given you basically the preliminary site plan that we would submit to the state. It has utilities, it has grading, it has the location of all the important site features, and we've provided these preliminary architectural floor plans and renderings that would also be furnished to the state as part of our application package. So in order to move forward with the LIP.
Okay. I'd just like to ask Mr. Germaine or Ms. Underhill, if they have questions. I'm having some technical difficulties here on mic. I don't want to interrupt the conversation, but I think what I'm going to do is log out and then log back in.
Excuse me, Jim. Jim, you know what? I'm having a lot of trouble over here as well. We keep going in and out, so I don't know what's going on.
Well, that's my problem, that I'm going in and going out, or others having the same problem, or just me?
I am. I'm having issues. It keeps coming up seeing internet unstable. I don't usually have that at night in here, but now it seems okay. I don't know.
That can happen if there are a lot of other users sucking up bandwidth, but I don't know why that would be.
Yeah, usually at night, we don't have such an issue, and people would have left by now, so, but maybe it'll get better.
I think it's something we need to bring up with the tech support group tomorrow.
Indeed. So, Jim, I don't think it's you. I think you can keep trying to carry on.
If it's not me, then I'm not going to log out.
No, I wouldn't.
I wouldn't log out, Jim. It's just go slowly with it. In the worst case, you can turn off your video, and that may make it easier in your case to hear and understand what's going on.
And for those viewers at home that are watching on TV, bear with us. It's just, it is, we're just having some issues.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to clarify, I think we gave tentative approval with respect to stormwater on this. I just don't remember, to be very frank, the details. Ms. American?
You took a vote to extend water and sewer service to the development with the condition that whatever form of sewer mitigation you guys develop, I think in your upcoming fall discussions, this applicant would adhere to.
Okay.
And yet, you haven't, I don't think you've flushed that stuff out yet, but whatever, no pun intended, but whatever, whatever you do decide, this applicant agreed to comply with that new standard that you would establish in the coming months with respect to sewer.
I just wanted to make sure, because as you know, we're butting heads at this point with the Charles River Resource Water Authority and so on, and it's causing a bit of a concern, but I think that we will overcome that in this fall. At least, that's what I think our intent is at any rate. I did have a question then in that regard, since it's a LIP, and it will have 40B housing in it, is there anything about allowing us to move forward even if we were to exceed our sewer restriction limits?
Well, it's a hard question to answer. Basically, from a state perspective, if the town has actual sewer capacity available, it's reasonable to extend it to an affordable housing development. And, you know, you guys are only discharging 50% of your allotted average daily flow to the treatment plant, so your actual discharge has lots of room. It's just, you know, you have all that future paper discharge that is not really clearly defined. So I think you certainly can move forward with this application. It's not, it's not a big project. It's 22-bedroom units. It's only an average day flow of 2,200 gallons per day. It's a modest project.
I understand all of that. What I was really getting at was any support we might get from the state, but that's a different, somewhat different issue. On the other hand, I'm looking at ancillary options, because we are going to have to make some decisions over the fall, but this isn't the time to explore them. I'm comfortable with what we've already agreed to.
If I may just ask a couple of quick questions, just because I wasn't here when it first came up. But, so you're saying, from the image that you have up currently on your shared screen, you're saying that around this development is all commercial?
It's not all commercial. So this is the site plan. This is a, this is a commercial building. It's a real estate office. Down to the west of us is an industrial commercial building. Behind us is the Berry site, which is a commercial contractor site. This over here is some type of commercial use. I'm not sure exactly what it is at 1314. And then there's, there is one single-family home adjacent to us, which is, again, another pre-existing non-conforming, single-family residential use. There's maybe three, three single-family homes kind of in this little stretch, which is on the opposite side of the road from Tractor Supply.
Thank you.
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Karen?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. I just wasn't sure if I'm doing this correctly. All right. Thank you.
Were you saying something, Tom?
Oh, no. I was just making sure you could hear me in case there's any question. I'm not sure if I was.
I thought you were saying something.
No, I'm not very technologically advanced, so I'm just.
I'm a Zoom novice.
That's okay.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, technology is not all it is supposed to be, anyway. I think I heard three-quarters of what was said before. I apologize for not being able to hear.
So the next, the next step, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you heard this part, but the next steps, if the board was willing to proceed with the support of the LIP, would be to take a vote to co-sign the LIP application and sign a letter of support, unless there's further information you'd like from yet.
Okay, yeah, I mean, at this stage of the game, I think you understand our dilemma and our support. So when we give that support, we'll still be asking you to work with us on the sewer capacity issues as we get this project underway. I think you've agreed that it's in all of our mutual interests to see if there's solutions to this problem. But personally, I think it's important for the town to, where these viable projects come up, we can support them. Not only does it provide some housing much deeper. Not only does it provide some housing, much-needed housing, but it also helps us to address our housing production of affordable, uh, housing projects as well, which is really critical to us in the short run. We had a project closer to the center of town that was proposed and we've been working on, and apparently that project is not coming forward due to some financial issues. But in any event, I think it's important for the folks in town to understand that, you know, this is an important initiative, just one of several, but nevertheless, something that provides the town with some real benefit, particularly as it relates to the affordable housing goals that we have, so. Questions from the Board members?
I don't have any further questions.
Nor do I.
So can I, comes to mind to me.
Yeah, Tom.
Um, so I talked to, um, Mr. McKay about this, and I think this is a good project, um, you know, with the situation with the sewer, because I talked to Jim and we're talking about putting an actual meter on the sewer to actually see what the, you know, the true use is.
Okay.
That, that's correct, Mr. Chair. Uh, this is the first development that we would actually do that. I mean, we have a, we have one on the Charles River Estates, but that would prove, um, I think this is a good project. I believe that, you know, in the area, it'll build up that area on that end of Route 109. And I think, Mr. Roach, we've had many discussions about water and sewer. I mean, there's still going to have to meet the, as you know, Mr. Chair, we, you know, we felt we had a, an issue with water pressure going towards the Midway Town Line and we, you know, that's going to have to be the developer's going to have to ensure that he has all that. You know, he has the right water pressure and Tom knows that and Dan, you know, we're working through that right now.
Very good.
So, but Jim, I think it's important for, it's going to be some useful information for the town to see if these units used for sewer, you know?
Yep, yep.
Most definitely. All right, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I do think that to that point, um, that the interest of the town and the interest of, um, you know, developers who are willing to partner with us are, are the same in terms of trying to find our way through this sewer issue. So we look forward to continue to work with the developer as we move forward with this. So I guess at this point, we've been asked to vote.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman? Kathy McInnes here?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Kathy McInnes, 78 Allen Road. Uh, I'd just like to remind you, Mr. Chairman, that I was hoping to get some sort of, and I thought the Board agreed to, a written opinion by Town Council regarding the use of, um, commercial property for residential housing without a change in the town meeting. And I'd just like to remind the Board that you'd be giving up some, um, much-needed commercial property. I don't know if Mr. Weiss wants to address this like he did a few weeks ago, but, uh, commercial property that would be very beneficial to the Town of Milis just as well, to bring in some much-needed tax base. But I'm just more concerned on a, um, uh, opinion from Town Council, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Council's opinion, Mr. Gazinski, do you have some insight on that further report on it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I don't have a written opinion from Council, but I can certainly obtain one for the Board. Uh, I did speak with Council shortly before I left on vacation. Uh, he didn't indicate to me that under the chapter 40B program that it, uh, these types of developments can be put in a commercial zone. But I will, I will speak with Attorney Talman in the next day or two and ask him to send a, a written opinion to the Board.
All right, thank you.
And through the Chair, Mr. Gazinski, could you please cite some cases also, court cases, that would prove that the courts did approve the, um, switch from, uh, commercial to affordable housing? That would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Um, I think, and we are seeking is the opinion of Council. We'll leave it to Council how they formulate that opinion. If they give us an opinion that we can rely on, that will be sufficient.
Mr. Chairman?
Opinion that could not be supported in the judicial proceeding. Uh, Mr. Weiss?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to chime in, uh, Ms. McInnes had mentioned. Um, it's, it's always a balance in these cases. We have a lot of area in town that is, uh, commercial. We have a lot of area in the town that's, uh, that's residential. We don't always know, and we'll be getting to this in a few minutes when I start to talk a little bit later on, but we don't always know what the future holds for any of these areas. As you mentioned, this is, uh, good for the town's affordable housing. It'll add to our subsidized housing inventory. Um, and no project is, is perfect, of course. No area is perfect for a project. I find this completely acceptable in terms of, uh, planning and economic development for the town.
All right, thank you. Um, so at this point, is there further questions from the Board members? Or if not, is there a motion with respect to the town's support for the local initiative project application?
Can I ask a question?
Sorry, who's?
Kathy Lanin, Board of Health. May I?
Yes, Kathy.
I'm sorry, this is a new project to me. But to my recollection, there's no sidewalk on that side of the road. Has, has that been brought up as an issue? Or at a minimum, a crosswalk to the sidewalk on the other side?
Was something that was discussed back in February and the applicant indicated a willingness to install a crosswalk and perhaps a flashing light?
Thanks.
Just to clarify in terms of, um, the process here. The process is, um, the Board being asked to support the local initiative project. This is not the last discussion that we will have about this project with respect to these issues that folks are raising. Um, so there's still opportunity to work with the developer to make sure that this project meets some of these requirements, I think. Um, I think personally, I agree with the prior comment that we want to be sure that there is, you know, safe access to the road as well as sidewalks at that end of town. Uh, because as a couple of the speakers have really indicated, you know, we're, we're being asked to support a residential development in a commercial area. So there's a lot of challenges there. That doesn't mean we don't support it. It just means that we expect that, and we would have the developer continue to work with us, the DPW, the police and whatnot, to make sure that if the project goes forward, public safety, um, remains paramount.
Hello? This is Tom.
Yes.
Well, we had a meeting, we had a pre-meeting with the, um, High Department, the Police Department a long time ago, and, uh, they, uh, seemed to feel that it was, uh, good. Uh, you know, I don't want to speak for them, but they didn't have a problem with it at that time. And I just want to, I think it was Kathy who brought up about the commercial property. Um, I, I would have not gone and submitted this proposal without, you know, having Council's advice. And I'm told absolutely projects can go on any, you know, any kind of land. Uh, some industrial, commercial, residential. Maybe, Dan, you can add on to that?
Sure, uh, yes, that's the case. And just to follow up on the Chairman's comments, this is a very preliminary step in the process. If the Board elects to support the project, what happens is, is we submit an application for a letter of site eligibility to the state. If they issue a letter of site eligibility, then we go forward. We prepare detailed design documents, plans, architectural plans. And we submit a separate permit application to the Milis zoning Board of Appeals, and there's a public hearing process where we vet all these kind of nuanced, detailed questions. So it's, this is the very beginning of a fairly long process that involves a lot of public input.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I apologize to the folks who want to speak. It's hard to manage this through the Zoom. Hopefully someday, public meetings in the public space. But I want to make sure there's a chance to have their set.
And I think as Dan is sharing his screen, it's hard for me to see if anybody's raising their hand.
Want to stop sharing, Karen?
If, if you're all set, you can, and then we could see if anybody needs any. Sorry, all right.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Jermaine?
I'll move that we, the Board, endorse going forward with the LIP project, at least at this stage. And we agree that this is something that looks positive at this time for the town, obviously with the caveats that have already been expressed. And we'll get more information as time goes on.
Second?
It's a move in seconded for the Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry, the Select Board to, uh, vote to support the local initiative, uh, project petition of the, um, developer for 1344 Main Street and support, and support their application to the Commonwealth. I'll hold the Board for a vote. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. So, Mr. Roach and Mr. American, we look forward to continuing to work with you to hopefully get a project that is beneficial to everybody.
Great, and then also our next step, just so you know, is we'll prepare the LIP application and a draft letter of support, and we'll submit that to you for your consideration at an upcoming meeting.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is a quick one, which is related to 20-185, which is the Fall Town Meeting. The Fall Town Meeting is rapidly approaching. We are in active discussions with the Town Moderator, um, the School Department and others to determine whether or not a, uh, I'm sorry, and the Department, and the, uh, the Public Health Department to determine whether or not, um, we should aim for an open, a, a town meeting, which is held outdoors. If that's the case, it's the Fall Town Meeting. We've also thought that we probably need to bring it forward, at least to the end of October, to make, give us an opportunity to at least have a, you know, fairly good shot at having good weather. And most likely, it would be during the day and most likely during the, uh, on a weekend. So this is yet to be determined. Uh, there's still, that do not, the Board has not received a formal, uh, recommendation from the Town Administrator, but I wanted to make folks aware of what the conversations were all about so that we can move ahead and hopefully plan for a town meeting, um, assuming that we're still in this state of emergency. So that's a little background as to why we thought it was appropriate at this point in time to open the warrant. Might be a little earlier than we would otherwise do. Um, but I think it's important for us to open the warrant because what that does is it enables Departments, um, and the Town Administration to seriously start thinking through.
Well, hold on.
The warrant is those who may want to proceed.
Could you hear that? Sorry, I, my, it keeps being unstable again.
Uh, I don't know, do the other members hear the conversation about the town meeting warrant?
Yes, okay.
Okay. All right, so just a little bit of the rationale. We'd like to open the warrant. Um, Mr. Gazinski, do you have a, a thought about, uh, potential closing the warrant? So we give people the opportunity to understand how long this is going to be open?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend to the Board that you anticipate closing the warrant in two weeks. Uh, having said that, um, as you know, and the Board members know, the Board still has the authority to open the warrant for the purpose of adding articles after that, but that would be at the Board's discretion. Uh, I think we, we, from a time stand, uh, time point, we need to look at being ready for, as you mentioned, a, a Fall Town Meeting as early as late October. Uh, it may seem like it's far away, but that time will pass quickly and there are a lot of procedural and timeline issues that have to be followed. So I do recommend that the Board, uh, plan on, uh, closing the warrant in two weeks from tonight.
Okay, so the, the recommendation is we open the warrant for two weeks. That gives people at least some notion of what, that it's important to start submitting warrant article requests. That doesn't mean that we don't have the option, opening it, reopening it at later date as important issues come forward. Uh, but I think it's important for us to be in that process. Uh, otherwise, we're going to find ourselves, yeah, very late in the process. We don't want to do that. So I, I would, uh, make a motion that the Board open the warrant for the Fall Annual Town Meeting tonight on August 31st and close the warrant.
September 14th.
September 14th.
At 6:30 PM, right before the meeting?
Yeah, at 6:30 PM.
Okay.
Second?
It's a move in seconded to open the warrants for the annual Fall Town Meeting tonight and to close it on September 14th at 6:30 PM. So it's been moved in seconded, I think?
Yes.
It did, okay. So I will call the Board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. So if we could ask the Town Administrator in the office to make sure we communicate with all Department Heads and whatnot as to the opening of the warrant, and then we can begin to assemble it to see kind of what, what's in store for us. Um, and I think that, uh, that will be very beneficial to get this ball rolling. Okay, next item on the agenda is item 20-187. Um, this is a, uh, another grant, uh, good news for the town, another grant. And I'd like to ask Mr. Weiss if he could report on the Mass Development Technical Assistant Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if it's all right, I'd like to take, uh, one minute and yield to the town's Energy Manager just to announce that, uh, the town has received, been awarded a Green Communities Competitive Grant, their third one. Three years in a row, $182,582 for five projects that will lower our energy use. Uh, predicted that will save about $20,000 a year in, um, gas and electric use. And that will, those will be going into the high school, the town hall, uh, a DPW facility and the fire department. So we have won that. And now
Congratulations, good news, thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight, we're all prepared now.
Yes.
For you and the chief.
Well, the chief certainly outdid everyone today. That was a wonderful, wonderful grant that, uh, that we, that they were able to win. I'm jealous, but I'm working at it. So tonight, um, I'm asking the Board to approve and for the Chair to sign a letter of support. Um, that will basically give us an analysis and a planning effort to assess and to envision a revitalized town center. Um, to accomplish this, this week, I'm going to submit on behalf of the town an application to Mass Development for a $45,000 real estate technical assistant grant. Um, and no match will be required from the town for this grant. Uh, the area of the study, you know, will be the area within Auburn Road and Curve, Union and Main Streets. Should we be awarded this grant? We'll actually have the opportunity to work with residents, businesses, stakeholders, and consultant to look at the town's, uh, the town center's makeup, which would include, you know, design and infrastructure, health, traffic, marketing, environmental, and analyze all environmental, and analyze all this for the future of what is a very valuable part of the town's economy, and a part of the town that is going under change right now. The centerpiece of this is the participation. As I said, it's going to involve businesses, residents, town staff, stakeholders, folks from inside and outside the study area, because we're all affected by this. The results, the result of the process will be an understanding of the town center's economic prognosis, and envisioning of the center, and a plan to achieve that vision. Doesn't mean we're going to be able to absolutely control the area, but at least we will all, private sector, public sector alike, better understand and be better prepared to leverage development opportunities on the benefit, for the benefit of all of us.
Well, great for you identifying this opportunity. Are there questions from the board members?
I do not have any questions.
Nor do I.
So, then I would, again, this is an opportunity for us to support the work of our planning director, and to seek some grant assistance from the Commonwealth on the study of the downtown area. We have a motion to, we're looking for a motion to support the application. Bob, is that what you're looking for?
Yes, and for you to sign a letter that was, a letter to Mass Development, to Christine Midori, which was included in your package.
I move that we support the application for the technical assistance grant, and that the chair sign the letter of recommendation as well.
I second that. Mr. McCaffrey, can you hear us?
Yes, just barely. There was a second?
It's been moved and seconded.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's really, really raving up, unfortunately, but in any event, we'll motor, we'll continue to muddle through. So, it's been moved and seconded that the board approve the grant application, just the grant application for $45,000 to Mass Development, authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the town for this support. I'll hold the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously.
And Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Bob, for, you know, searching out these grants. I mean, it's, let's hope that we're successful in getting this one, because it sounds like it'd be very beneficial for us.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Jermaine?
No, can you hear Mr. Gazinski?
Mr. Chairman?
Jim?
Karen, yes.
Mike is trying to speak to you. Sorry, this is like the, hold on. Starting my video.
I can hear him. Sorry.
Can you hear me, Jim?
Can you hear Mike?
I hear him. I hear him now, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to take a quick moment to just add on my appreciation of Bob's work here, beginning the obtaining of the $183,000 grant. I can attest from watching him work that getting these grants is oftentimes a torturous process, and he has to go through many hoops, and deal with a lot of red tape through the state to obtain these. So, again, the amount of funds that he has secured for the community continues to grow, and just wanted to, just, and I'm sure the board knows this, but just the work he does to bring in these funds to help continue our energy program and continue to save the town money, it makes a large impact on the community. So, just wanted to take this opportunity to add that in. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much. Praise well deserved, even if it took me a while to get through to me.
It was, it was harder to get back through than anything else.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, the next item we have on our agenda is an update, which originally billed as an update to the board on the ongoing negotiations with GTE to locate a growth facility in Melis on Main Street down in the industrial zone. And the board has received information from the, from town council regarding the economic components of the proposal. What I was going to do tonight is just run through it with the board members to give you a heads up. We reached tentative agreement with the applicant at about 4:30, or actually it was 5:30 Friday evening, so it was impossible to provide the board with the information last week, but I wanted to be able to just run through with this, so you know the parameters. What's going to happen is town council is completing the drafting of the host community agreement along the lines of this economic proposal. That information will be furnished to the board members well in advance of our meeting on the 14th, where my plan is that we will look to take action on the proposal, either accept it, or ask for changes, or whatever. So, I'm not asking for anybody's approval tonight. I'm just giving an update to the board and to the community about where we stand with our negotiation with GTE. Speaking of Mr. Weiss, when he took off his energy hat, he put on his economic development hat, and has been an integral component of our negotiations with GTE, doing a lot of legwork on the competitiveness of the offer, doing a lot of due diligence research on the applicants themselves, where they're doing business, what kind of businessman they are. And so, working with Kate Federoff, and myself, and Mr. Gazinski, this has been sort of a four-person negotiation team. During the critical moments, Mr. Gazinski managed to go on vacation, so that made it a lot easier for us to proceed. That was a joke, by the way, and at this point, technology probably makes these fairly, even more apparent person. But I did want to give the board an update on what the community impact would be from this particular host community agreement. This group is continuing to pursue the purchase of land here in town, and it is looking at the construction of a new facility, which would be a growth facility. There's, there's no retail component to this. It's strictly a wholesale oper, so we don't have any of the issues of retail sales. This company has a couple of retail outlets in other towns, but it's, so it is going to be part of an integrated business, but the component that is proposed for the town in Melis is on the cultivation side. Just very briefly, and there is some written material that hopefully the board members have seen, the proposal is a bit different from the ones we've had before, because the market has changed, and we were able to get some strong HE, HCA payments in place for the applicants. This one's pretty strong as well, components to it, which make it a little different. So, long story short, in terms of community impact payments, basically the company has agreed to a tiered approach to a percentage of sales, 3% up to $5 million in sales, 2% up to 5 to 10 million, and 1% 10 to 15 million. Based upon the analysis that we did in the various scenarios, as they would build out their facility, our expectation is that when the operation is up and running full-time, this would generate $300,000 of annual impact payments to the town, based upon the volume that they're, they're planning. Because the, it is also providing, is going to be providing product to its own outlets, the wholesale... You know that Mr. Roach is still on? Does he know that?
I, I just muted him. This has been, this has been like the Zoom meeting. Sorry.
Did he vote yes? So, in any event, I said the impact payment, we expect a total of about $300,000 a year. GTE would provide a signing payment in the event we determine that we're going to enter into a contract. That would be a $15,000 payment due upon execution of the contract. That would be offset by future impact fees, but it would be an upfront payment. We're also looking for quarterly payments, similar to those that we're receiving from Comcan. Quarterly is much more, we believe, much more advantageous to the town, because it provides us with cash flow and the ability to recognize revenue more quickly under the DOR restrictions on when we can recognize marijuana revenue. This particular business has a little different aspect to it than the other two that we have agreed to, 6.7 and Comcan, because it is basically building a facility on a virtually empty lot. There is one old building on the lot, but that will be torn down. So, currently the real estate taxes on that parcel of land are about $3,500 a year. When fully built out, the combination of the real estate tax and personal property tax charged on the equipment in the building, we total about $250,000. Actually, it's about $254,000. Anyway, in any event, it's a significant increase in local tax revenue, because the building is going to go on basically a vacant piece of property. Now, that, the revenue, of course, is going to be every year. It's not limited to the five-year HCA, but it is a significant amount of money. This group, so in sum, summation would be that when fully built out, in the five-year period, after the HCA goes into effect, it would generate about $550,000 annual revenue to the town, and then at least $250,000 after that per year, based upon the real estate taxes. Couple of indirect benefits that they have, they are committing to. One is local hiring, that we have a provision, we have provisions in there that are more specific to local hiring, that is hiring of local Melis residents, more specific than we had in the other two businesses. The expectation is it'll create about 70 to 80 jobs, and we would like by year three to have at least 50% of those jobs held by Melis residents. That's the goal. GTE has committed to what they're calling fully paid volunteer service hours. They've offered to provide 150 hours of employee time on service projects in Melis that we would ask them to participate in, which, you know, has a significant benefit to us as well. This company is committing itself to a charitable contribution regimen, which would indicate that they would be committed to making $50,000 a year in donations to Melis charitable organizations, whether it be those that benefit youth, seniors, and anything in between. We have agreed that we would work with them on selecting the charitable organizations to which these donations would be made, with the $50,000 as an annual donation that they have agreed they want to participate in. Their position is that they want to be a more visible community participant. That's the way they do business in the other towns. So, they are, they are interested in, you know, I guess, if you want to call it branding, their, their company has a charitable participant and a community participant vote with respect to the service hours and the charitable donations, which would be cash. So, there's other provisions in there, in the proposed HCA, again, which will be provided to the board members. And I'm not necessarily asking for, you know, comments, but happy to take them, because this is the preliminary agreement. Nothing is final until this board has been presented with the full package, as well as all the language in the contract, which is, will be coming hopefully in the next couple of days. Comments, questions from my colleagues? I know it's a little bit late to get this information, but I wanted to, I wanted to get it out today, so that we would have plenty of time to think about it and talk about it at the next meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Underhill?
From what you've just explained to us, and the benefits that it sounds like the town will reap with, in agreement with this company, it sounds like a very positive situation.
Thank you.
I just want to make a quick note. Your explanation was netted out beautifully. It makes it very clear, and assuming things go as you laid them out, it does clarify the entire operation and the benefits that will accrue to the town. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. I mean, part of the, it's not the, part of the issue here is percentage of sales for a wholesaler. It also provides product to its own outlets. So, we spent a lot of time talking about that, and I would tell the folks, both on this call and in the town, that this group has been very open in disclosing information. Not that the others weren't, but I mean, they've been very straightforward and upfront about their operation, and, you know, sharing with us their business plans, et cetera. That doesn't say, that doesn't mean to say that we're not going to require audit, audit response, you know, audit ability, et cetera, et cetera, to make sure the numbers are right. But at this stage of the game, it's a slightly different approach than the other, the other two companies, one with the, and of course, one is a grower that's going to move into a building that already exists. So, the differential on real estate is not going to be nearly as great on that one as it will be on this one. So, I guess our goal is to get it one way or the other. So, okay, well...
Mr. Chairman, Kathy McInnis again?
Yes, Ms. McInnis. Yeah.
I'm sorry. Did, did you give the address?
I did not.
What is the address? I don't remember here.
And I was looking for it frantically before the meeting, and I can't find it. So, somebody will look it up before this meeting ends. I think it's, I want to say it's 1200 or something of that nature on Main Street.
On Main Street? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, on Main Street down...
It's on the homepage of the website, if I can get to the website.
No, but the application had it, and frankly, Ms. McInnis, you caught me, and I'm very embarrassed, and I should know it. Here I am proposing something for the town to consider, and I'm not telling people where it is.
Hold on. We'll find it.
Well, we'll come back to that.
Those are the proposed low-income housing.
Well, I didn't say it wasn't. And I would tell you that we have tried to make that information available to both of these people. Well, Kathy, before we close the business tonight, which means that Kathy's going to have to stick through the whole thing, no, we will get that address, because it's a very important component of what we're talking about here. It's not just what the business is, but where is it going to be? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Veterans Memorial Building gymnasium floor replacement. Karen, that's you.
That is me. I'm searching at the same time here. Bear with me. That is me. So, unfortunately, as you know, or I believe all of you know, we recently had an issue with our HVAC unit, which is the air conditioning unit on the top of the gym here at the Veterans Memorial Building. That unit only, it's only for the gym, for the heat and air conditioning. It is separate. There was an issue with it. It froze up. Water poured into the gym, damaged the hardwood floor beyond repair, unfortunately, and we had to submit an insurance claim. HVAC unit is now working well, knock on wood. We believe that problem has been corrected, but we're left now with replacing the floor. So, I thought at this time that maybe we should look at, the former floor was a hardwood floor, which was beautiful, but we also thought maybe it was a chance to look at putting in a synthetic floor to see if maybe that made more sense, as far as being for a multipurpose option. Would it be easier to clean and maintain? So, I did a bunch of research to kind of look into that, asked... So I did a bunch of research, kind of look into that, asked several people, including our school department, and 90% of the people suggested going with hardwood and just remaining with a maple or hardwood floor. It doesn't seem to, unfortunately, the synthetic, it really doesn't do the things we were hoping. We thought, like I said, it would be lower maintenance. It doesn't seem to be that much lower maintenance. It's just different maintenance. That floor could still scratch, et cetera. And it would be an upcharge to the town to do the synthetic floor because they would have to make up the height difference on the slab. So that being said, I would recommend continuing to go or going back to doing the hardwood floor, and that's where we're at.
And Mr. Chairman?
Specific questions, but.
Ms. Strigusinski?
Yes, and I have, I have looked at this issue as well and spoken with Karen and as well as reviewed the feedback we've received. And I agree, I think at this point, based on the feedback we've received and the fact there is a cost differential, staying with the maple flooring makes sense for us at this time, and I would recommend we move forward in that fashion.
And I would just note that people who are coming in to vote tomorrow, that currently the floor, they have removed the old floor, we're down to just the slab, cement slab in there, but it is set up for the election the way it needs to be. And so once the board votes tonight to hopefully move forward with the maple flooring, we will get that ordered. And I don't know the timeframe, but that will be, it's a little ways out. It was about a six to eight week lead time for any kind of flooring. So unfortunately, this is kind of a long, slow process.
Yes, and as a result of the timeframe and the fact that we do have the presidential election beginning of November, there's, there's a chance that we may not be able to begin the reconstruction, restillation of the new floor until immediately after the presidential election. So just to keep that in mind.
And as a complete side note, Kathy McGinnis, 1480 Main Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron, for finding that for us.
Bob just confirmed that as well.
Okay, great.
1480.
I apologize to the public for not knowing the address, but now we know it's 1480 Main Street. Okay.
So I guess it's just looking to the board to see if they should vote to move forward.
We need a motion to approve the.
I'll make the motion, if that's okay, that we can move forward with the replacement of the Veterans Memorial Building gym floor in either, well, in some form of hardwood, probably maple, whatever.
Second.
It's been moved, second to approve the proposal to replace the gym floor with hardwood, hardwood surface. I'll poll the board, all those in favor. Poll the board, Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of a one-day, or one-day special alcohol licenses. Ms. Karen Burey will.
That is me again. Sorry about that. I'm going back and forth here. And I'm sorry, in all of this, I was going to text Linda to let her know, Linda Shirizio, who owns the farm, to join our meeting, but I think this is fine. I don't think we really need to have her here. So she is looking for more one-day alcohol license permits. The dates are September 5th, the 12th, the 19th, the 26th, and September 3rd would be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. for a funeral reception, the rest of which would be for 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. She does want the full alcohol license as, although she will not be having a full bar, she does want to do a few specialty drinks, like maybe a Bloody Mary or something, to be available when people are sitting down to eat. And again, after talking with Linda, she did say that they are probably going to be pursuing a full alcohol license next year, but they were not ready this year, if you remember, due to COVID and whatnot. They kind of wanted to wait and see how it all went, and it seems to be going very well. Sorry, that's for Tangerini Springs Street Farm. I don't even know if I mentioned that piece.
Yes. I move that we approve the one-day licenses for September 3rd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. for a funeral reception, and September 5th, 12th, 19th, and 26th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and that alcoholic beverages will be served for profit at those times.
Second.
It's a move that seconded for the board to approve the special alcohol license for Tangerini Springs Street Farm, September 3rd, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., September 5th, 12th, 19th, and 26th from 9:00 to 3:00, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., all alcohol license. All those in favor? I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. The next item we have on our agenda is, we had agreed at our last meeting that to the extent members of this board attend or participate in other board meetings where we are officially designated as liaison, we would take a few minutes to update the other board members as to what transpired at that meeting, just for purposes of keeping everybody informed. So I will just state that I did attend the latest ESBC meeting on the 25th. That's the Elementary School Building Committee. This committee is really reaching toward the end of the project. Most of the conversation was about punchless items, relatively small fencing, fencing on the tennis courts. There was an expectation that most of the punchless interior to the building would be completed either the end of this week or the end of next week. The contractor is looking to wrap this up. Also, at the time, it was reported that the radon mitigation construction work was underway and should be completed, again, by the end of August. There was a fair amount of discussion about the testing that would occur, and testing of whether the radon solution is working will occur. As with many other things, it is a little bit tied up with when the building will be occupied again, occupied again. Where under normal circumstances, you would expect the building to be occupied, the testing to be completed, but there's a, there's a process they're going to go through to try and get all that testing done and work around the times when the school is either empty or half, half full. The only major thing, well, it was not a major thing. One other thing was a discussion about ponding of the tennis courts. That was being referred to the contractor who built the tennis courts themselves, and they didn't have a solution to discuss at the meeting, but they are working on it to try and eliminate that ponding. The only thing that should last really through September, according to the report from the contractor, is the additional outside landscaping. But other than that, most of the project should be wrapped up, interim for national construction, certainly early September. And then hopefully through September, the landscaping will be completed. That's a little bit weather dependent, but that's the goal. So that was the discussions at the, at the meeting. I'm not sure if they're going to wind up the work, but they certainly have, you know, it's certainly getting to the end of the line. I should mention, there is one, there's one flooring issue in one of the areas that they're still working on as well, where it seems to be some buckling in the, in the tiling. But again, that one is something that they're actively, trying to actively address. So that was, that was the content of the meeting. Garrett, you mentioned that you had on the school committee, last school committee meeting?
I did. I haven't been officially in contact with anybody to join, I guess, the meeting in person, so I connected to listen. I guess, just to give some highlights, they did enter into some contracts for, you know, sanitizers and dispensers and some ionizing machines that would help disinfect. School, the first day of school for at least Clyde Brown, I think for everyone, is September 16th, and they are beginning remotely. There was a discussion during the meeting, a parent had started a petition to ask the school committee to revisit the decision to start remotely, but the decision will stand. So school will start remotely, and in October, they will revisit that plan and see if it makes sense to go to a hybrid plan, which would involve most children going two days a week and then learning remotely the rest of the time. They did also speak to sports. They're going to be doing kind of like athletic pods. Based on the type of athletics, they'll be doing golf, cross country, and soccer in the fall. They will not be using locker rooms, and it's going to be more about not creating or crowning champions, but creating opportunities for these students to be able to participate in sports, given the circumstances. I think that, that is it in a nutshell.
Okay, great. We're hoping for the best, and I did contact the chair and tell her that, you know, we're looking to help any way we can. So at this point, they've got a tough road to go, and they're not going to make all the people happy, that's for sure. Hopefully, everybody will be safe.
Yes, I agree. That should be top concern.
Okay. All right, I'd like to move on to the next item, which is 20-192. This relates to the creation of our proposed enterprise funds advisory committee, which would be a committee to provide, I'm not on the three enterprise funds, our sewer and stormwater. Of course, I'm a firm believer in the fact that if we're going to set up a committee, we ought to tell them what we want them to do. So I proposed a draft, which Karen circulated everyone's, yeah, I'm sorry, it's all eight. But I'll highlight it, and I'll ask specifically for board members input and any edits you'd like to see. The proposal really is that the advisory committee would be appointed every year by the select board, and it would be made up of five members, five voting members, that we would ask for one member of the select board to serve on the committee, and we would ask for one member of the finance committee to also serve. The appointments would be made by the board, but we would look to have membership from both select board and finance committee. Then there would be three sort of committee members at large. This model is being used pretty much by the capital planning committee, so it's worked pretty well to make sure that the town and the finance committee are informed about what's, what the considerations are. That's why I thought we may, we should consider that. We would have, we would ask the town administrator, the DPW director, and the director of public health to participate as ex-official members. One of the things that, certainly from the point of view of the infrastructure and the operation of the systems, the DPW is critical, as well as the town administrator, one of the issues in particular that has been addressed over time by the drinking water committee has been water quality and water safety, so I thought it would be appropriate for us to reach out to have participation from the public health director on this as well, because there are public health issues that sort of permeate, perhaps not so much stormwater, but certainly sewer and water. And the goal really of this committee is to provide advice and input to the select board on the operation of the three enterprises, water, sewer, and stormwater. It's not to substitute for what we've been doing, it's not, but it is trying to get us a way to have some broader discussion, an in-depth discussion about people, from people who have some knowledge and also some commitment to the issues. And what I thought we would ask them to do in terms of recommendations is things around capacity management, infrastructure, the planning, so many of the things we talked to kind of other folks about, the quality of the water, cost allocation principles, which we've been working on, want to continue to pursue so that we get fair cost allocation across the enterprises, long-range planning. We've talked a fair amount about reserve levels, what's the right reserve level? I think that we've had some conversation while we set the rates on water and sewer in the last month, that maybe we ought to revisit the reserve level to make sure we understand what the reserve level needs to be and why we're going to aim for that reserve level. So those are the attributes that I saw. I had town council review this, and his advice was, in particular, to make sure that it's clear, particularly from a statutory point of view, that the water and sewer commissioners, the decision-making authority rests with the board, as the water and sewer commissioners, as well as the governing authority for the stormwater enterprise. So this committee is designed to give advice, to give insight, to, you know, hopefully broaden enough thinking, but the board is going to retain responsibility for our rate setting in particular, but also the overall operations of the three enterprises. I thought it was, you know, it's important to clarify for committees what we're asking them to do, so that they don't, we don't overpromise, or they don't find some, some concern that we don't follow their recommendations. But in any event, this was my effort to draft this so that it, you know, once we've got this finalized, we can reach out and recruit some members and hopefully get up and running sooner rather than later. If you're going to ask people to serve, I think you ought to tell them what you're asking them to do, so that's why I took a stab at this. So I would open the conversation to my colleagues on the board to determine how it is we think we want to structure the language here. I would hope that after discussion, we could actually tonight perhaps vote on the final wording so that we can, you know, shift to the recruitment. And so I'll throw it open to my colleagues on the board for their conversation about what they think about the proposal.
I mean, I like the overall philosophy that you were putting together there, and I like the whole basis of the recommendation in general. I'm missing a portion of what you sent, and I apologize. I can't find it in my documents. I think the portion where you, where we have to emphasize that the board has overall responsibility, and that perhaps didn't come through clearly to me when I was originally reading the document. You emphasized that this evening, but I want to make sure that the document is very clear in that regard. But it's, everything else is of an advisory nature from my perspective, and I think that's very important to distinguish between gaining advice, getting the correct people to give the advice, but the ultimate decision-making rests with us, with us, with the board, if you will. So that was the only comment that I felt had to be emphasized in that document.
Okay, yeah, I, I tried to get at that. It wasn't as strong when council reviewed it, and he advised the same, that we need to be clear that the responsibility for deciding rests with the board, particularly because of the fact that, you know, we are operating under certain statutory requirements. And in a sense, you know, we've already collapsed, in other towns, water and sewer commissioners are not, are separate. Here in Melles, it's with the board. So what I've said is the select board will consider advisory recommendations from the committee while fully retaining its independent responsibilities as the water and sewer Maybe I should add, its independent decision-making responsibilities.
Yeah, I just don't want any ambiguity, is what I'm trying to get at in that statement.
Right.
I think that change makes sense for the decision-making part.
Make it clear, specific, the decisions are rests with the board.
That's right.
Let's do that. Okay, I didn't address anything in this with respect to the, you know, the skills and capacities and capabilities and competencies of people who are going to serve on the board, on the committee, I mean. I think that's really something where you put it in, when you try to recruit, you say, this is what we're looking for. this is what we're looking for. This is, because I don't want to preclude someone from serving who has a good deal of good judgment and good knowledge, even though they don't happen to be, you know, a sewer engineer. That's, I don't think that's what we're looking for.
No. I think it's important that it is inclusive also to representative members of the community.
Yeah, yeah.
And to that extent, that gives us latitude to bring in a variety of different types of people. I agree. We can always get, I believe, the technical people, and we have people within town, as employees and otherwise, who can help us in that regard. But I'm very strongly in favor of participation to the greatest extent possible from the community at large, so.
Well, I actually, this brings up the, I guess, the numbers question. You know, we have a capital planning committee which calls for seven members, and we have been unable to consistently have seven members. We have five, basically. We're still looking for if anybody wants to join the capital planning committee. So rather than create a committee where we can't fill the slots, I thought it'd be better to have a majority that's not an official board member, because if they have three members at large, then the select board member and the finance committee member are not the majority. So I get that, to me, that gives the community its input. I think we can always change it to increase the number if we found that would be beneficial, or we could allow, you know, non-vote, other non-voting members to participate. I don't love that, because it just creates additional notice requirements and all those kinds of things, but I think.
I mean, it does sound good, but I think with any, with any committee quorum is, you know, the biggest issue for a smaller number.
Yeah, right. The quorum becomes an issue. I, you know, I don't have a quarrel at all with member or people who decide they would like to participate, perhaps can't on a regular basis, and so are not willing to become members. On the other hand, I would say most committees, and I will use the PBC as an example, are very open to other people contributing during meetings, and many times, the chair will ask for their view and their vote, even though the vote is technically non-binding to the committee. They listen, and they hear what the vote is, it gets recorded, and I think that's important. And if we determine that, yes, in fact, there are more people who would like to participate, we can always make the change accordingly.
Okay. Okay, we'd like to, since the wording is obsolete and it didn't get fully to you folks, I mean, we can, I don't want to keep pushing off and pushing off. On the other hand, I don't want to, I don't want to vote on something you haven't seen, so.
I'm personally comfortable with approving this as it's worded and then amended this evening with the decision-making part of it.
Okay.
If that's okay, if Pete's comfortable with.
Why don't you make a motion accordingly?
Okay, I will. I move that we, the board approves the charter for the Enterprise Funds Advisory Committee as presented and amended.
I'll second that.
I was moving seconded to approve the charter for the Enterprise Funds Advisory Committee as amended to clarify decision-making responsibility. I'll poll the board, all, those who fit, I'll poll the board for this, just after we get done with it. Anyway, Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
I'll ask one question, Mr. Chair, now that we've.
Yeah, sure.
We didn't include in this the MS4. Do we want that to be a part of this or not?
What we could do is make a slight additional matters, including capacity, regulatory compliance, which brings in MS4, because each of the operates on its own permit. I mean, MS4 is the stormwater permit, but there's also a permit for water and sewer, so.
Right.
If we talk about regulatory, including capacity management, infrastructure and system. Long-range planning, reserve policy, regulatory compliance, and related matters. So that'll, that'll cover the regulatory.
I'm sorry, I didn't think of it earlier, but.
Oh, that's fine.
I think it's.
So, I'm going to make a motion to amend accordingly. So I make that.
I'll immediately amend accordingly.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Moving in second, additional amendment on regulatory compliance. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine, yes? Sorry, I'll let you vote.
Yes. Thanks a lot.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Okay. So what I'd like to do is, when I clean this up, we will post it on the website as a call for recruitment, and hopefully we will make some outreach, et cetera, et cetera. And we really are looking for people to help us with this project, and I think that this is going to be really important for us in a whole number of ways. I'd also like to suggest, if it's okay with the board, that I would ask the town administrator, through Karen or whatever, to contact the members of Sewer Study Committee and Drinking Water Committee to see if they have an interest in being considered for this new group.
Will do.
So hopefully, you know, get some, get some folks to participate.
There's already a bit of interest, so I think we'll get people.
Well, yeah. Karen, can you also forward this to Jordi Garzon?
Yep.
Because we're going to have the finance committee hopefully designate a member.
Okay, will do.
I'm pretty sure there's one member of the finance committee who'd be very interested. So we might have already, we might have already gotten a head start. Okay. Okay, thank you. And hopefully, we'll be able to, you know, make a reasonable effort to get this group up and running at our next meeting. The last item I have on the agenda for tonight is a copy of proposed board goals for FY21, which is based upon our meeting on August 10. I tried to capture in this proposal the spirit of what we talked about, while keeping the number of goals manageable and achievable. I would like to open this to general conversation from the other board members, because I think this is important for us to try and understand whether this is going to meet our needs, whether we need to make some changes in it, et cetera, et cetera. Just from the point of view of the public, the topics covered really in these goals were, you know, our role in helping to manage the impact of COVID-19 in the town, our interest in articulating and developing a broad policy for senior services delivery, enhanced model for water, sewer and stormwater enterprises, which we're already taking action on by creating a committee, improving communication and citizen engagement, utilizing technology effectively, as well as developing implementation plans, continuous improvement in service delivery, particularly as it relates to the possibilities for introducing what I call shared services, that is a service that goes across all departments, school and town. For example, we've talked about IT, we've talked about HR, we've talked about buildings, we've talked about fields. Hopefully, a, working on publishing policies, procedures for the board and its, the way it conducts its business, as well as clarifying the social media policy for committees and elected officials. We all, we have a social media policy for town employees, we can take a look at that as well, if we think that that needs to be updated, because obviously, social media has changed since, and it's a constantly moving target. A goal of continuing our commitment to the collaboration with the finance committee and the school committee on the tri-board for revenue sharing and annual budget preparation and other strategic matters. And then, of course, really, it's continuation activities around the housing production plan, the open space plan, our economic development planning, and the projects that we're responsible for ultimately, the large construction projects that the board has to provide appropriate levels of oversight, Bygones School, which is almost done, but then the DPW building, Lansing Millis building, and any proposed new or renovated senior center. So just for, I ran through them so that people would know what we were, you know, generally what we're talking about. I'd like to ask my colleagues for their views and opinions, see what changes we want to make, and see if there's further study or if we could take action this evening.
I, I personally like this list. I think it encompasses everything that, you know, we've discussed. I think, I think especially this year in the middle of a pandemic, it's hard to, it's hard to define some things, but I think this is a well-defined list of things we could actually do some work on right now, so I'd be very happy to move forward with this as our goals.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Jermaine?
I do have some thoughts on this, and I don't know if we want to put them in this list or not. We have issues that have to deal with, as we know, the sewer hookup, and we had decided to defer until the fall, trying to deal with those issues. But they are, in essence, board issues that we, as a board, are going to ultimately have to make recommendations, but also talk with our representatives and others to try to resolve. It seems to me that resolving the sewer problem, or at least coming up with some possible resolutions to it, has got to be a key objective, at least in the fall term, and if we can't resolve it, which is a pretty quick term right now, to be resolved certainly by our next annual town meeting in May or whenever it turns out to be. So that's something that I feel is very important. We know it's a constraint on the town right now, and we have got to put whatever effort is necessary in to get some kind of resolution in that area. That's one of them.
Yeah.
Another one of concern to me are some of the upcoming potential regulations. We've heard one specifically regarding the chemicals associated with PFAS, which I can never remember the poly-whatever chemicals, that don't break down readily over time. We may be faced with putting in some kind of scrubber or filtering whatever system, and from what I understand, these could cost the town up to a million dollars or more to put that into our water filtration process. I think it's something that we, as a board, again, have got to stay on top of and understand what our obligations are, is there any deferral, what are the risks? I do have concerns that if it's determined that the town water supply has to incorporate some mitigating solution, that a lot of people in town have well water, and do we not, as a town, have obligations to help them understand if there is some filtration or study that ought to be done to understand what they have, if it is in fact realistic to think that these chemicals must be filtered out? I'm not trying to make projects that cost us money, far from it, but if in fact, these are in essence mandates coming down from the state that we are going to have to comply with, then my concern is, okay, if we have to comply, do we not have an obligation to the community at large to help them to understand what it means to their own personal drinking water systems, over which they have no control? They put down a well, and they need to be able to pull water out. So I bring those up because I think they are part of a process that we need to be involved with and cannot delay on as part of our board. I think many of the other things that I was concerned with, and I've got a list, I will defer, but those two seem to strike me as ones that we need to have some focus on.
I would agree, and I guess that I was trying to capture some of that, and maybe it's too vague, under the comment on water and sewer enterprise, water, sewer, stormwater This really, you know, is a, it's similar to what we talked about in the context of the committee, but the development of the strategy for going forward, as well as implementing it, rests with this board.
Right.
Not with our goal and what we're trying to do. So maybe what you're looking for is really, let's see if I can think of some words that would.
A little more specificity, maybe.
Well, I mean, it's something like capacity, it's nice to say, capacity management.
Yeah.
But it's not, point is enough as saying managing our limited resource and our ability to access the Charles River Pollution Control to provide sewer service to our citizens.
Right.
Regulatory compliance, I think, is something that we just added to the other language too, which was missing and needs to be put in here.
Right.
So I think what you're suggesting is a little bit more specificity around the water sewer component here, which I can, I understand what you're trying to say. That's part of the issue with any goal, I mean, is it too broad so that you can't even figure out what it is, or is it too narrow so that it doesn't get the bigger picture?
Sure.
Okay, I can, I can, what I would offer to do is try to tweak the words a little bit, rather than do it tonight, unless you have some way of dealing with it that you feel more comfortable with.
Well, to be very.
And I love the thing that I thought, I was thinking, you know, and this is, again, our conversation, is at the time you develop the goals for the board, you know, do you ask individual members of the board to focus on one or two or three of these as part of their own personal commitment?
Sure.
Which might make sense, because then it starts to get a little bit more accountability. I think it's going to happen anyway, to the extent that, for example, you have agreed to serve on the water sewer, which is now going to morph into enterprise. I mean, obviously, we would, as board members, your colleagues would be looking to you to take the lead on that, and help, not that we're going to do it without, we're going to participate too, but somebody has to sort of take a little bit of ownership. I thought that we might want to talk about that at another meeting, but I don't keep kicking this can down the road, as, you know, we've done in other iterations, so I'd like to, I'd like to not delay, but have a particular deadline for this. I mean, we could do it at the next meeting as well, but I think, right, so that's good.
I have absolutely no problem personally with going ahead with the goals as you stated them, with, again, the understanding that we may choose to modify them, amend them, whatever, over time, but at least it.
Okay.
Lays down a groundwork for starting the process.
Okay. Okay.
I think all the basic, not basic, that's not a good word. I think all the, all the large issues that, you know, in, in some fashion that we've been discussing are included here. So while it might not be incredibly specific in one area, I think, I think it covers the topic, and I think with us working together, we'd be able to expand on those as necessary.
Agreed.
Okay. I'm happy to go forward. I, I would like to, on the line that created the model for water, sewer, stormwater, I would like to add, though, to Mr. Germaine's point, at least a specific reference to regulatory compliance. But we do, I do talk about capacity management.
Right.
And we went, we just decided that was really important for the committee to look at, our committee that we're going to create. So I think regulatory compliance ought to be added to that because it is such an enormous issue. And as, you know, Pete has indicated, this goes beyond just compliance. You know, it goes, perhaps goes to advocating at various levels to change it. Now, that's quite an undertaking, but we're spending our, our fellow citizens' money on compliance and not asking back up the food chain, why are we doing this? Maybe that's, maybe we aren't doing a good job. I'd like to then make the motion that we adopt these goals as written with the amendment to, to make a specific reference to regulatory compliance, regulatory compliance for the water, sewer and stormwater enterprise goal.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. I'll poll the Board for approval. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. So I will also work to make sure I get the final wording to Karen, and hopefully, we can publish these on the town website in the near future, at a place where people can find them. Oh, that was, I appreciate the comments and thoughtfulness of my colleagues on the Board this month in working through this. For those of you who have not been following us, at every turn, we spent a number of hours on this collectively and together. I think we have a good model here, and I agree with Mr. Germaine. It has to be a little bit fluid because if we need to change things as we go forward, then I do that. But we're looking to set these goals and hold ourselves accountable to taking action and achieving the results that are set in these goals. So thank you all for that. And at some point in the near future, we will then sit down with the Town Administrator and ask the Town Administrator to develop his goals to help us, support us with achieving the Board's goals, which, again, is part of the performance management process that this board commenced last year. We'd like to continue to work with and enhance and strengthen as we go into FY21. Okay. So now we've reached the point of future meetings and times, as we've gone through the budget, we've gone through, we've gone through the agenda. We have scheduled meetings for the 14th and the 28th.
Yes.
Is 6:30 still prime for the, for the member?
Fine with me.
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
All right, so we'll meet at 6:30 on the 14th and the 28th. We have typically scheduled a meeting with the, for the Tri-Board Committee for September 16th at 7:30, tentatively because I didn't confirm with you folks that you're available then.
That's a Wednesday, yeah.
Again, I think it has to be a Zoom. Peter and Karen?
I'll be available.
Just give me a second, please. September 16th at 7:30?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we agreed in the past that, you know, that's the typical time where the FinCom meets, so we figured that's a, that's a good time to have the three groups come together.
Yeah, I have no problem with it. I just wanted to make absolutely certain it was available.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I heard back from the Chair of the School Committee, hadn't heard yet back from the FinCom, but hopefully, we'll get that straightened down, get that on the, on the Boards. And we can talk a little bit about, certainly, our agenda items that we'd like to discuss because we will be meeting before the Tri-Board. All right, so that would be, then there is, if we would schedule a meeting for the 16th, which would be the Tri-Board meeting, that's at 7:30.
Yep.
And to get, you know, October.
Yes, Miss City, do you want to look at October?
So we can stay ahead of the game a little bit. So if we met, what, the 28th, two weeks later?
It's Columbus Day, so that's.
That's still a holiday?
Yep. So you may want to do the 5th and the 19th? I don't know.
I would actually recommend the 19th and the 26th since we may be gearing up for the town meeting at that point. And maybe have a special meeting if needed, if there's, if there's something in between that time that's needed.
The week of the 12th, maybe?
May I?
Yeah.
My concern is, we, we'll end up with a three-week, two-and-a-half-week, three-week gap.
Then you'll have two in a row.
I have no problem with the 19th and the 26th. I do know from my time on the FinCom that a lot begins to pop that last few weeks.
Right.
And it may be useful to at least have a preliminary schedule for the 5th with, if we don't need it, great, but then the 19th and the 26th are almost a certainty.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think we're better on doing it and then saying we don't need it.
So 10-5, 10-19, 10-26, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And we will find out when the town meeting is shortly, once we decide.
That will be helpful.
All right. All right, folks, I guess that completes the agenda. I don't know what to, because it's only 10 after 9.
I don't know what to do with my time.
It's 9:11, I'll have you know.
Oh, jeez. That means it's time to go, so I would take the.
Time to go.
Before you go, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Is, do we want to try to schedule an actual in-person meeting at our old room with the, the three of us would be in the room and everybody could really position themselves such that we're a good 10 feet apart type of thing and at least have one meeting where people can see us all together?
I think that, I, I agree. I asked the Town Administrator to address this entire issue, both with respect to us as well as, you know, the building and when we might open it at the meeting on the 14th. Now, if we, as a Board, want to meet in the room for that meeting, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, well, I.
The only, the only issue with that is if you are not allowing the public to fully come in the meeting, you cannot do it with Zoom and have the three of you in here.
Oh, no, it has, I can Zoom it, I can Zoom it and all be in the same room. I don't see why that's a problem.
Because you'd have, we'd have to all be on one computer or phone.
Why is that?
Because otherwise, you get all kinds of feedback, you can't do it.
I hope it's better than the one we're on tonight.
So you follow, so I don't know, we'll have to look into the logistics of that. They could film you here, but doing the Zoom portion, we haven't been able to figure out how we can do that.
I would say, I was on one Zoom call with the Norfolk County Advisory Board, and it was unbelievably bad because there were a bunch of people in the room.
There lies the problem. You'd have to, logistically, you'd have to have a computer that was far enough away that was filming everybody sitting at the table. But then, there'd be nobody to actually go over to the computer to work on it, so that's, I, I don't know, we'll have to just figure out how we're going to do it.
Well, I agree with.
There probably is a way somehow, I just don't know how.
How about, how about if we look after this the next few days?
Yeah, we can look into how that could work.
Yeah, from a safety standpoint, there, there wouldn't be an issue with the, the three members of the Board coming in and, and being here for the meeting. Well, we can, we just have to look at the logistics of the, the video and having the public be able to still, you know, be present in the meeting through some, through the Zoom platform. We'd have to just look at that. So, but from a, from a health standpoint, safety, we can certainly manage the distance issues in the room.
Quite honestly, I could still run the Zoom meeting from where I am if you, the three were in another room and you just had the ability to, to film the three of you in the room. Yeah, I mean, we're just going to figure out how to make it work.
I think we can work something out. I'll try to come in and maybe work with you over the next, sometime in the next few days when, in your copious free time.
Absolutely, I just like to hang out usually, I hear. No, much appreciated. Any technical assistance is greatly appreciated.
But I think that, yeah, I mean, to the extent that we can try to work toward improving the way this is done, I don't mean the technology, I mean the in-person interaction, I agree.
It's tough, I know.
This is very, well, everybody agrees. But the one thing we can't do is hold a meeting where the public can't have access.
And that's when the issue is, doing both, so. But we get, you know, we made this work, we can figure something out.
Okay. Well, the point was taken, Pete. I think that I, you know, like I said, I was talking to the Town Administrator earlier about, okay, what's the plan to emerge from this? And if there's interim steps that can be taken, let's see if they're actually feasible.
Okay, it would be nice.
I concur.
All right, so, thank you all. I would take a motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, the Board adjourns. I'll poll the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Thank you from town, of townsfolk for listening in, and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.